Good evening, everyone. Thank you guys for coming out. At this time, I'll start the meeting. In accordance with the visions of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting of the time, date, location, and its stat nom. The agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press, the new poster on April 5th, 2022 via email. Copies of this notice has been placed in administration building, bulletin board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on April 5th, 2022. The Asbury Park will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and characters to succeed in diverse and evolving society. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hallz, Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillo.
Here.
Mr. LaRocque.
Here.
Mr. Remy, Ms. Ricks.
Here.
Mr. Saunders, Ms. Lizinski.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Please rise to the flag salute. Dominic, can I have your report, please?
Certainly. Finance Committee met on May 12th. First item, we discussed the 2023 budget and stabilization aid. There is upcoming availability of stabilization aid. Last year, the state issued $37 million. It's anticipated that there will be approximately $50 million in the stabilization aid pool this year. And the district will apply once it's available. This is one-time allowance. And the difficulty is our submission must include a statement detailing how we're operating in future years without the additional awards of stabilization aid. As we looked at wrapping up the 2023 budget, we already started looking at 2024 and realizing it's going to be a significant shortage. So that's going to be an issue in our application. But we plan to do so. Second, the Legislative Audit Team has concluded their follow-up review. The one item they chose to note is that they recommend a decrease in the healthcare waiver payment described by the New Jersey Department of Pensions and Benefits. This is a situation where an employee who is covered under health insurance from their spouse chooses not to have health insurance from the district. They receive a waiver payment. And this Legislative Audit Team is recommending that we decrease that payment. Any change to that payment must be negotiated in a collective bargaining agreement. We recently went through that with some unions, chose not to reduce it. The Board's negotiations committee will be advised of this recommendation moving forward. With regard to the third item, the ESAR bid proposals and the elevator replacement, we've opened our first bid for multiple HVAC projects utilizing the ESAR funds of approximately $6.2 million. Projects include the HVAC systems at Bradley Elementary, AC in the high school college wing and gymnasium, as well as rooftop units at Thurgood Marshall Elementary. We also discussed the bid for the elevator replacement, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Upper Elementary School. And we expect to have that awarded bid included on the June agenda. Next item with regard to professional services bids, in terms of number of years, the committee discussed renewing various professional services bids. And in light of a number of years without a bid, we recommend an RFP for the district auditor. The committee recommended that all other professional services with no major issues identified by the administration be continued for another year. And finally, I think we also covered this in Buildings and Grounds, update on the life skills room at Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Upper Elementary School. We'll install new sinks, ovens, stove top, washer dryer, refrigerator, lights and flooring. Those have all been ordered. And the work is scheduled to begin in June. And that concluded finance.
Thank you, Dominic. Before we proceed, what I want to do is give two presentations for the kids. So I'm sure this is very boring for them. Dr. Adams.
Good evening, everyone. This is our portion of the program where we recognize our Students of the Month. As you know, this has been an ongoing program that we've been doing this year to recognize all of our students. Each month, there are a number of students that are selected by the school, by their teachers. But then, we select one student of all of those students to be recognized at the board meeting. And so the students tonight are the May Students of the Month. And so we'll start with Thurgood Marshall. And I'll turn it over to the building principal.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Jackson, the proud principal of Thurgood Marshall Elementary School. And before we introduce our Student of the Month for May, I would like to invite up Ms. Hamilton and Ms. Jagu, our teacher and teacher aide of our Student of the Month, as they have a special gift as well. Thurgood Marshall's Student of the Month is a young student who some words to describe her are gracious, polite, kind, respectful, and a true volunteer. I look to her as a ray of sunshine in our school building and a student that always brings out not only the best in herself, but all of those around her. Ms. Altera Taylor, please come up and get your award. Mom, please come up as well. And Altera, in truth, there are good fashion. We have beautiful flowers. And I did my homework, a bag of all your favorite goodies. Here you go. We are so proud of you. It's heavy.
Let's give her another round of applause. Our next principal coming up is Ms. Thea Jackson Byers, principal, the proud principal of Bradley Elementary School.
Enthusiastic learner, polite, helpful, just a good student are words that describe our second grade student of the month, Ms. Amina Barrow. Today was our third marking period awards assembly. And when I say Amina had to have taken at least about five, we needed about a couple of hands. Mom and Dad, we want to say thank you guys so much for everything. If it weren't for you, thank you for blessing us with Amina. So of course, I have a couple of things. So Amina, of course, I have some spiritware for you. So here you go.
That's for you. Mom, these are for you for blessing us with the gift of Amina. And Mom and Dad, we want you to represent and represent Wrightford Bradley Elementary School. So you got a brand.
I'm sorry. And I just want to let you know that Amina's teacher is here, Ms. Shelley Sanders. Ms. Shelley is here.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders, for being here. Thank you, Ms. Jackson Byers. Our next up is Mr. Perry Medina, the principal of MLK Upper Elementary.
Unfortunately, I do not see my student, a young Mr. Dylan Chico Debas. He's a fourth grader. He is an awesome kid. He shows up every single day. His attendance is awesome. His grades are A pluses. And he's an extremely honorable and helpful student in our school. So I will accept this award on his behalf, deliver this to him tomorrow along with his gift card. So thank you, Dylan, for being an awesome student.
We have our National Honor Society induction at the high school today. And so Dr. Howard Morris is not going to be able to be here because she's presiding over that. So we have Mr. Edra Ruiz, who will be presenting the high school student of the month.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. It gives me great pleasure to do this. I have to tell you, because I know this young man very, very well. Mr. Kevin, I'm going to read this and I'm going to speak from my heart after I'm done here. But Kevin Caballero Cruz is a ninth grader, a dream student who is bilingual, speaking both English and Spanish fluently. Kevin wants to be a computer programmer in video game development. You're not going to talk after this. All right. Kevin is very involved in his church community and is a volunteer in the food bank. Kevin excels at working with others and loves his English class the best. I had the pleasure of being a principal here at Bradley, and Kevin was one of my students. I can tell you unequivocally, he's an amazing young man. I've watched him grow up. I've had the pleasure of seeing him throughout the years, just even in the hallways, when it was middle school and now at the high school. And there are no words to really explain how excited I was when Dr. Howard asked me to do this and who it was. So without further ado, I want to present this to Kevin Caballero Cruz. Mom, por favor, join us up here. This is a little swag bag for you, my friend.
Absolutely. Well deserved. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. That concludes our student presentations.
I want to say thank you again for everyone. We'll continue with our committee reports.
The curriculum and instruction committee met. We basically discussed summer school. We discussed hiring a music band teacher for grade seven through eight. I think that is something new. I don't recall us having to do that during our summer school. We discussed posting for two social emotional learning coordinators to work with our students. Also, the Spanish, French, and Creole reading coaches for the summer. There was something on the agenda that I had a question for. Rather than me trying to explain it, I'm going to ask Mr. Ruiz if he would break it down for us.
Not a problem. Thank you, Ms. Ricks. I believe the item in question was item number 17. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, item number 17, which is the recommendation to approve summer hours for our SACs attendance officers and a health and social services coordinator. So the question that Ms. Ricks had was why didn't we need two SACs and two attendance officers? I explained to Ms. Ricks that each attendance officer in each SAC covers different levels. So each one attendance officer in one SAC covers our elementary school grades and the other one covers our secondary school grades. I just got word, just so you know, Ms. Ricks, I just got word from email that one of the SACs has resigned from that position. So it's going to be one SAC. We're going to amend this to be one SAC for this agenda item. Because, you know, what they do is they work for, they prepare in the summer for the 2022-23 school year. They also assist us with students who need buyback hours, making sure that they're showing up, going, the attendance officers, so forth and so on. And we also work on different scheduling needs as well in the summer. So those are the things, some of the items, just some of the items that they cover.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Mr. Medina, do you want to?
All right. My buddy here, Dylan, showed up. We're so happy to have him. Dylan, why don't you come on up? So we can have a face. So this is my guy, Dylan. And as I mentioned before, he is an awesome kid, an awesome student. He is truly an inspiration. The fact that he's able to come in every day, go about his business, complete his assignments, and do so well is completely honorable. So Mom, can you come up too? Very proud of you, buddy. Very proud of you. Hi, young lady. Hello. That's all right. All right. Okay, I'll send it to Dylan. I'll print one up. Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. Joe.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Excuse me. So we had our Buildings and Grounds meeting. Some of the items that we spoke about, Dominic, who also spoke about during finance, so I'll skip over a few of the items. But we did have a facility use request by the Kuzik Brothers Youth Football. They started a use of facility application, but it has not, they haven't completed all the requested documentation. We expect to receive a request for a fee waiver for approximately $1,500. But we'll only include on the agenda, we'll only include on the agenda if all the paperwork is submitted. I don't know if we've gotten that paperwork, right? Okay, so it won't be on the agenda. Also, water lead testing for recently reopened water fountains and for Obama are scheduled for this weekend coming up. All right? And the district needs to test all facilities by June 30th. And this is a recent requirement that it must be conducted every three years. Dominic already went over the ESAR bid proposals, so I won't repeat it because it's exactly the same, the same thing that was going to be discussed at Buildings and Grounds, as well as the Life Skill Rooms. We had a couple of interesting conversations. We discussed topics such as reopening the basketball courts behind the high school and what that would entail. We talked about relocation of Central Office, repurposing of Obama School. And these are all just kind of preliminary conversations to get, wrap our brains around it a bit. Using the foundations to fund various repairs to district buildings and properties. And then I had brought up a topic that I had spoken about with a few folks in town regarding the name of Bradley Elementary School. And kind of brought up the idea of renaming Bradley Elementary School to honor U.S. Supreme Court Justice Katanji Brown Jackson. And I received kind of the policy information on that and what's needed for that to happen. But one of the things that I had mentioned during the meeting was that obviously, we would want public feedback on this. As a personal point of, you know, opinion, renaming it is not something that is needed or necessary, but it is a way to meet the moment of this historic moment of Katanji Brown Jackson being appointed to the highest court in the land. I think there's no other school in Asbury Park that's named after a woman. And according to the board policy, a school building or school facility may be named to memorialize the outstanding service of a school district employee or officer. And no such employee or officer would be considered during his or her lifetime. And then the board would welcome the suggestions from members of the community in naming school buildings and facilities. So I wanted to just open up that conversation, see what the board thought of renaming Bradley Elementary School. I think especially after seeing just these wonderful students that came to get their award and come to get their award every month. We already have a park. We already have the tallest statue in Asbury Park honoring James Bradley. And thinking of someone that our children can look up to that is not political because it's a Supreme Court justice complementary to Thurgood Marshall Elementary School, I wanted to just get everyone else's thought about that.
I like the fact that the building grounds starts renaming Bradley School, especially after. I love the fact that the Buildings and Grounds Committee discussed renaming the Bradley School, and especially after a woman. I have a couple of folks that I'd like to be considered a mother. Would be Shirley Chisen. She is the first black woman elected to Congress. And another one is Barbara Jordan. She's the first black woman elected to, from Texas. And she was also attorney and a civil rights leader. Those are two suggestions for me.
I was just going to say, I support your, you know, the idea or decision, especially with the time that we're in right now. And like what we just saw, the many examples, I feel as though it'll be very inspiring for the children, for everyone. I'm with it. That's all, that's all you got to know. I'm with it.
All right.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. And we could take some steps. As you say, Joe, let's get feedback from everyone if there's other suggestions from, and then feedback from the community, from the staff. But I think it's a, it's a great idea to be moving forward in that. Thank you.
I would have liked to have named it after Ms. Ricks, but.
We also have a comment from Ms. Lizinski.
Yeah.
Joe, could you? Thank you.
I was thinking even our vice president would be an interesting choice to consider also.
Any other comments?
The only question, other question I had was one of, are there any costs associated to it that we should consider? And also, how do we, how do we go about getting community feedback other than just, I guess, public comment during the next few school board meetings?
Can we do a survey?
The board can certainly elicit public comment through various mediums. Certainly by welcoming members of the public to board meetings additionally. I do realize that not everybody has access to a computer, but you can certainly, if you'd like, run a survey electronically online. You can use whatever methods and modes you think will best elicit a response from the largest, you know, part of the community as possible. So I think there are multi, you know, multiple levels or ways of doing that. And again, the idea is to not only elicit input from members of the community, but also students, staff, et cetera, so that it can be an open dialogue for everyone. As far as the costs associated with it, you know, obviously, you have signage and things like that. But aside from that, I'm not aware and cannot think of any major costs that would be associated with it at all. Perhaps there would, the architect may need to, you know, modify a plan or two just to indicate the names, the name of the building with the DOE. But other than that, that's, you know, that's really rather minor.
We could probably see if there's, you know, there's plenty of sign companies in, you know, in town that may even want to donate their services for free, so. Well, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Before we open up public comments, we'll have a comment from our lawyer, Adam.
Yes, in accordance.
I'm sorry. There was a comment we wanted to make about athletics, and I didn't know if you want to touch base on policy. Ms. Lizinski, did you want to discuss athletics or?
I wasn't at athletics, but I was at policy. And all of whom are mandated except for one, which is correction. So it's really not much to discuss besides that. Unless I missed something, Jeff?
No, you're correct. And in terms of athletics, Ms. Breach asked me to mention that the awards banquet that was scheduled for June 16th, Thursday, due to a conflict with the graduation at the charters, is going to be suggested to move to the 15th, which is a Wednesday.
Okay. So in accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question and answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the presiding officer and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open a public comment. At this time, I'll close public comment.
We'll do the minutes at the regular session.
Okay, we're going to make a motion to move into execs. Before that, where else the Open Public Act allows exclusion for discussion at the public portion of the meeting of certain matters as outlined below. And whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education was to discuss such matters made and will make public such discussions, public and proper commutation has been reached. Now therefore, by view of all that on May 19th, 2022, at Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purpose of the outline and described below, upon return, action may be taken. One, confidential matters per statute on the court order. And I'm sorry, impact rights to receive federal funds unwarranted division of individual privacy, collective bargaining, accusation of real property or investment of funds, public safety procedures, litigations or contract matters, or contact or client privilege, personnel matters, or inflation of penalties upon an individual. Motion, please? Thank you. All in favor?
For members of the public who are here, the board's going to retire to executive session to discuss matters of attorney-client privilege, contracts, negotiations, and other personnel matters. It's expected that the board will be in executive session. It's expected that the board will be in in executive session for approximately 20 minutes. No formal action will be taken in executive session, and we will return at approximately seven o'clock for the regularly scheduled public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. In accordance with the vision of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the date, the time, location, and extent known, agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on April 5th, 2022 via email. Copies of this notice has been placed at the administrative building, bulletin board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on April 5th, 2022. The Asbury Park District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society. Roll call, please.
Ms. Als, Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillo.
Here.
Mr. LaRaca.
Here.
Mr. Remy.
Here.
Ms. Ricks.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Ms. Lizinski.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Please rise to the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
Good evening, everyone. Prior to my presentation, I would like to take a minute to ask for a moment of silence for the families impacted by the mass shooting in Buffalo last Saturday. It's a tragedy. With that being said, as we have been doing over the last several months, recognizing our staff members of the month. And so with that, I'll start with Mr. Perry Medina, the principal of MLK Upper Elementary.
All right, thank you. So our staff member of the month, Ms. Jackie Philhauer, please come up. I would like to say, as she is standing here next to us, that it is truly a blessing to have someone when it is chaotic, when it is busy, when we have so many things to do, that answers the call every single time. Her energy level, her smile, her enthusiasm truly do inspire the the staff and myself. So I want to say thank you, Jackie, for being awesome. Thank you for being a hard worker. MLK loves you. We glory. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Unfortunately, my Bradley Elementary School staff member of the month could not make it. When I tell you this staff member bears her heart on her sleeve, she works herself to the bone, to the point that even though she cannot drive, she gets on the Uber just to get here and does, and gets 110%. So, Ms. Denise Di Alessandro, you are our ray. Seven, I'm so sorry, I, I, I could not, I was trying to keep it from you, but this is why I needed you here tonight, Dee. This is why I needed you. Thank you, Dee, we love you. Thank you for all that you do. We love you.
Thurgood Marshall, Dr. Jackson.
Good evening, everyone. It is my privilege to award one of our preschool teachers, the teacher of the month for Thurgood Marshall Elementary. I have had the honor of working with this teacher when she was a preschool teacher at a provider, and then watching her transition to in-district. Every month at Thurgood, the staff nominate the staff of the month, and I am so proud that Miss Houghen received over a third of the votes for this month. Some words that were used to describe her were honorable, respectful, dedicated, passionate, innovative, and dependable. So, Ms. Caitlin, you're joined by your husband. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. Unfortunately, Ms. Gerleen Perrin Donizel, who is our ELL, one of our ELL teachers, is extremely dedicated for our students. She knows the parents, she knows the family and the community. And unfortunately, she couldn't be here, but her son's graduating from King University. So I would like to have her here next month so I can give her that person. Thank you.
Really quick, before we end this portion, today we had the 2020, no, 2019, 2020 Teachers of the Year, and I want to recognize those staff that went over to Neptune High School today, next month. We will be giving, recognizing them here at the June board meeting with certificates. Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone. Before we open a public comment, we'll have a comment from Adam.
Thank you, Madam President. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance, and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question and answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the board president and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the board president and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open a public comment.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Board President, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Wonderful, great. My name is Alfreda Clancy. My house is literally in Neptune and in Asbury, and I am an Asbury school teacher. The first thing I would like to say is to please turn your lights off. Thank you. The second thing I would like to say is, Madam President, last month, someone mentioned that all of you, the board members, are volunteers. You are not volunteers. You are elected officials. Okay? Therefore, we are hoping that you have the interest of our students at heart. The third thing I would like to say, that was mentioned last month, ma'am, is that every board meeting was on a Thursday, except last month, and it was on a Wednesday. And we did have parent-teacher conferences. Therefore, the parents, ma'am, were not able to attend. And that concludes my statements. Thank you.
I guess at this time, I'll close public comment. Ma'am, I'm the only one in board member that has a child in the school district. And I personally feel very connected to the school and to the whole district. And I am definitely here to fight for our kids, because I want our kids to succeed, not just mine. And as for the, and as for the meeting, unfortunately, when we did in January, we did change the date so that people can attend the beers, but, so it back in January, that's when it was supposed to. I close public comment.
Okay, my name is Cassandra Marshall, I reside in Titten Falls.
Ma'am, can you bring that down? I'm sorry, I want to hear you.
Bring it down?
Mm-hmm.
Is that better?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. My name is Cassandra Marshall, and I reside in Titten Falls. And saying that, Madam President, that you care for the students, I know on the last meeting, and I'm the social worker being cut, I came to Asbury Park when I was five from Haiti, so I've been in the community. I attended Bradley East, Bradley West, Fangs Avenue Middle School, then my mother wouldn't send me to the high school, so I graduated from RBC. But in saying that you are for the students, and I like that, the fact that mental health was considered to be cut is just, it was kind of like a gut punch, not, not even because of me, but for our students. Like, sometimes we're in the cafeteria, and someone will just say, oh, my uncle just got shot, or the things that we have to deal with in terms of mental health, what is going on, even in this country, with the shooting that we just took a couple of minutes to recognize, with all that's going on, and just our kids alone being traumatized, and what we have to deal with in Asbury Park, day in and day out. So in saying that, I just didn't understand, like, why would you guys cut mental health with what all that our children go through, day in and day out within this community? If you can just, if you guys can re, uh, look at that, just so that, you know, our kids have the absolute best, they shouldn't be shortchanged as it always is. Like, let's look at the kids, what are the kids' needs? What do they? Okay, all right, I didn't know what you was talking. Yeah, so just, if we could just look at the kids and their needs and what is needed. And I also case manage out of district. The resources aren't in district to keep them in, so that's why we have to send them out of district, and they threaten our jobs about it. But the resources aren't there for them to be successful within the classroom, with the supports that are being cut. Thank you.
Madam President, I will, there's no report other than my presentation. However, if you want to go to the areas of the agenda, that's fine. There's no report.
We have a motion for page A2, the minutes, nine, A through D.
I'll move it. Second it.
Moved by Mr. Grillo, seconded by Ms. Cook. Any questions or comments? Mr. Grillo?
I have a question. How many, how many board members? I didn't, I, is everybody, is there a quorum, or is more than a quorum today?
There's a quorum.
Yes, we have seven.
Oh, good, okay, because I have to abstain from April 14th. Okay, because I wasn't here.
Thank you. Mr. Grillo?
Yeah.
Ms. Cook? Mr. LaRaca?
Yeah.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yeah.
Mr. Saunders?
There.
And Ms. Lizinski?
Yes, all except April 14th. I abstained.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act allows exclusion for discussion at the public portion of the meeting of certain matters as outlined below. And whereas Officer Park Education was to discuss such matters made and will make such discussions public when a proper conclusion has been reached. Litigation of contract matters, or client privileges, or personnel matters. Can I have a motion, please?
For the members of the public who are joining us this evening, the board's gonna retire to executive session to discuss matters that were mentioned by Madam President. And in addition to that, we'll be having a grievance hearing. It's anticipated that the board will be in executive session for approximately 20 minutes, after which time the board will return to public session to resume the meeting. Thank you.
We are back in public. Does anyone make a motion?
Second.
We need a motion first.
Yeah, I, I believe that the President, Madam President, was looking for a motion with regard to the grievance that we just heard in executive session.
I would move to deny the grievance just heard in executive session. Mr. LaRaca?
Yes.
Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Same.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like for a cassette agenda on all items from B1 through B8 with a correction on number eight, striking letter A. But also would like to read, adding on, be it resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education rescinds the appointment of Mr. David Ronco to the position of social studies teacher at APHS as a result of the exclusion of item A on page B8.
Can we check those pages one more time?
Excuse me, excuse me. To B11, excuse me. From B1 to B11 with the correction. From B1 to B11 with the correction on B8. Number eight, letter A.
And Ms. Liz, Ms. Lizinski has asked if we repeat the resolution you're reading again?
The resolution reads, be it resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education rescind the appointment of David Ronco to the position of social studies teacher in APHS as a result of the elimination of the number eight, letter A.
Thank you.
We have a motion?
I'll, I'll move it. Second.
Any discussion questions? Roll call, please.
This is all items with the noted corrections, B1 through B11. Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. LaRaca?
Yeah.
Mr. Remy?
Yeah.
Ms. Ricks?
I abstain on anything having to do with awards. No on 4A on B7, and yes on everything else.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders, yes, and Ms. Cook. Motion's carry. Do we have a motion for all items, C1, number one to C3, 10B?
I'll move it.
Moved by Ms. Cook, seconded by Ms. Lizinski. Any questions or comments? Ms. Cook? Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Uh, yes.
Mr. LaRaca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
And Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
All items carry.
Motion to close the meeting?
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.